All right, good evening, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get started here. Thank you. All right, well, welcome, everybody, to this joint meeting of the Placerville City Council and the Eldorado County Fire Protection District. We're gonna go ahead and start, so if everybody will please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome, everybody, to Town Hall. It's nice to see everybody's faces and have a full crowd. I thought it was early and firefighters, you guys are early, you guys are good. Everybody was already here a half an hour beforehand, so welcome. So with that, I will go ahead and have a roll call for this city council.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember No?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, then I'll hand it over to the Fire District for their roll call. All right, thank you. We have announcements, do we have any announcements, Cleve, or Fire District? None, okay. So we'll go ahead and move on to the adoption of the agenda.
Move for adoption.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any questions, seen done, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Yes, aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, well, you will go on and move to the good part of the agenda, the badge, yes. Oh, yes, sorry, yep. All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and move to item five, which is the ceremonial badge pinning, and I will hand this over to Chief Cordero.
Did I leave the opportunity to do a badge pinning swearing in to the few of our folks? There are some promotions and some new positions that are coming around the agency. We thought, hey, why don't we grab a microphone and take advantage of letting the city council kind of see this side of the fire service as well as the public that's here for the joint meeting. So this evening, like I said, we have a little bit of, you know, how things transition through the fire service. Recently, we had one of our captains that had been with our agency for 20-plus years that retired. So behind his retirement, that left a vacancy for a captain, so we'll be promoting one of our captains, who was an engineer. Now we have vacancies in engineers, so one of our firefighters being promoted to engineer. And then we have two new firefighter paramedics that'll be joining our team here locally in County Fire. So with that, we'll bring them up and we'll do the badge pinning. Our first one will be firefighter paramedic Wyatt Barsh. Hopefully, I said that correctly. So Wyatt was raised and currently lives in Chico, California. After earning his associate's degree in fire technology at Butte College, he went on to paramedic school in the College of Siskiyou's and most recently attended the Shasta College Fire Academy. Before having the honor to work for Eldorado County Fire Protection District, Wyatt worked as a paramedic for the Butte County EMS, and he was also a reserve firefighter for the Cottonwood Fire Protection District. And they are, these folks are on duty, by the way, not to interrupt here. We weren't sure if they were gonna be here, they were actually up on a fire. They did leave for a call, come back, so bear with us, hopefully, if they run out the door, it's not due to stage fright, so. But he was also a reserve firefighter with the Cottonwood Fire Protection District. He spends most of his free time outdoors, either mountain biking or snowboarding, and he is more than excited to begin his career in the fire service and learn all that he can learn in the process. And right on cue, send me, we'll see in a few, we'll make it work. And this evening Wyatt's going to be pinned by his mom and dad, Leslie and Rob Barsh, who are here in the audience, and I invite them up to pin his badge. Next, we have firefighter Tanner Sinkey. And Tanner was born and raised in Elk Grove, California. He graduated from the Rio Valley High School in 2019, and following that, he went to Texas to complete his EMT, his fire academy, and his tech rescue school. Once he began, once home, he began volunteering at the Harold Fire District and completing his AA in fire technology in 2021. Then he went to paramedic school in Terre Haute, Indiana, and began working at the Sonoma Raceway as a new medic with Life West. Now Tanner's excited to begin his career with Eldorado County Fire, and he looks forward to all the learning opportunities ahead of him. And Tanner will be pinned by his mom, who was there this evening, Colleen Sinkey. Let mom come forward. And done. Next, we have engineer James Chilcot. Now, I will say that we do ask each of our candidates and promotional folks to put together a little bio for us, that we can let the crowd and the people in attendance know a little bit of their backstory, how they came to us. Mr. Chilcot kind of gave me a short one and gave me the ability to add to it as I see fit, so. If there's a little bit of ad lib, that's gonna be me towards the end. But James began his career with Eldorado County Fire in 2011 as a volunteer. In 2012, he was hired as apprentice firefighter, and in 2015, he was hired as a full-time firefighter. James currently lives in Sierra Springs with his wife Nicole and his two children, Riley, who's six, and Ryder, who's 10. And I will say that through his career with us at County Fire, engineer Chilcot's been involved in many different aspects of our agency, from being an SCBA, which is our self-contained breathing apparatus technician, working on those packs for us. He's involved in a lot of various areas of our agency, up to now and including part of our crew that's working on some of our in-house maintenance stuff for our apparatus, taking some additional classes, which ultimately saves the taxpayers a lot of money and time and efficiency on getting our minor repairs done to our apparatus. And also, I have to compliment him while he's here, he does have the best hair in our Fire District. I'm completely jealous, if I could do it, I would. But engineer Chilcot is truly an asset to our community. He's somebody that's local, that's kind of grown up here and been part of this, and it's an honor for me to pin you tonight for the engineer position. And we did lose engine 28, so I'll defer to Mr. Morris if they come back. If we can maybe take a quick timeout and do our last one, if that's good with me, thank you, okay. So then, bear with me, we have one final formality to the promotions and these folks come online, and that's to swear them in. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the policies of the Eldorado County Fire Protection District?
And the policies of the Eldorado County Fire Protection District.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation?
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion?
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties?
Of your aid?
Of my engineering.
Upon which I vow to honor.
Upon which I vow to honor.
So help me God. Here, we want to grab a photo real quick, now would be the time, and then we'll let these gentlemen get back to doing what they need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I don't know if any of the boards want to make any comments? Well, again, congratulations on promotions as well as on all of their new pinning. So congratulations, everybody, and we'll keep item five open in hopes that 28 is able to come back, so. All right, so with that, then, we'll go ahead and move to item six, which is our discussion and action item this evening, and that's item 6.1, and that's to receive and file our public safety building needs assessment feasibility study and provide directions to staff. And I believe Mr. Morris is gonna kick this off for us.
My kickoff will be very brief, I just, now I'm gonna turn it over to others who worked on this report. But this has been a long time coming. I know we actually scheduled this meeting, I think, two or three different times before we got here, and we hope that we're that step closer now to making this a reality. So good to be with both the board and the city council tonight, and look forward to going through this presentation and then seeing where we move on from here. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our city engineer Rebecca Neves, and we'll go from there, so.
Well, good evening, Placerville City Council and Eldorado County Fire Protection District Board. It's great to see you all, and I just really wanted to, on behalf of the project team, wanted to thank you all for the time and your schedule to allow this joint meeting to take place. If I could, I'd like to do a quick little reintroduction. I'm Rebecca Neves, I'm the Placerville City Engineer, and from our police department in the back, we have commanders Maceal and Muser, somewhere, there they are. And Chief Rin is recovering this evening from a minor surgery, and so he's unable to join us this evening, but we're all keeping him in our prayers for quick healing. And we also have our wonderful fire chief, Tim Cordero, with the Fire District, and I'm grateful for all these fine gentlemen here this evening to help me present this item to the council and board, I'll try not to mess this up. So the purpose of this meeting is to present the, oops, sorry. Wait, wait for it.
Rebecca, I think we have our folks back?
Oh, great, I'll pause.
No, not yet. They're en route back? What if we should, no, 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 no problem. Like, couple of minutes, you think? Because we could just pause. Sorry, Rebecca. Yeah, that works, so. Go ahead, Rebecca.
It actually worked out perfect for us to seamlessly work out a technical difficulty, so, thank you. So the purpose of this meeting is to present the final space needs assessment and feasibility study for a combined public safety facility that will serve both the Placerville Police Department and Eldorado County Fire Protection District. You may recall at our meeting in April of last year, both the currently seated city council and board approved a contract with Duberry Architects to prepare the needs assessment that is before you this evening. And although a decent amount of time has passed, it was well-used and not a moment was wasted. What that time allowed were the opportunities to fully understand operations of both police and fire for current and future needs and how those operations are constricted by the current facilities. It also allowed the team to tour other successful public safety facilities in the region to identify what it truly looks like to have a facility that serves the needs of our local first responders. This evening, we'll be doing a brief recap of the background, discussing an overview of the space needs assessment feasibility study, and providing council and board with staff summary and recommendations. At our last joint meeting, the chiefs and I presented a pretty thorough timeline and detailed information on the many ways both current police and, the police station and the fire station 25 are underserving our first responders. So I won't bore you with revisiting those 31 slides this evening. They are available on the back table, and I believe you all have a copy of it as well. But I won't bore you with that, but highlighting here are some of the key takeaways from each facility as presented in the needs assessment. And I'm sure it's no surprise to anybody sitting here that they face similar challenges at both facilities. Those challenges include: the existing campus does not meet current life safety codes for an essential services facility; the existing facility does not provide sufficient space or resources for current operations or future growth; there is insufficient space at each existing site to allow for an adequate renovation or replacement of the facility at that current location. So that leads us to the question of what do our public safety teams need? The report identified critical needs, both fire and police, which includes an emergency operations center, an EOC, and daily operational support that focuses on safety, wellness, community enhancement, and fiscal prudence. Each of these components is essential to quality service from our safety teams for the community. In order to have a meaningful discussion on how we can better meet those needs, we then had to ask the question of what does it look like, then, to provide for the needs of our first responders? That led us to a conceptual design of a possible facility. I want to be very clear that these are merely for discussion and that no formal action or conversation has taken place prior to this meeting to put us in one direction or another for a site or a design. The first concept was to consider was location. Since neither the current police department location nor station 25 location could adequately accommodate an extensive renovation, expansion, or replacement of the facility with one large enough to support the services, the team looked elsewhere. Several key considerations of a future site included: access to major highways and services, uninhibited access during peak traffic, pull-through apparatus bay, close proximity to downtown, feasible construction considering grading and retaining walls to be cost prohibitive, and opportunities for future expansion. Placerville itself is an extremely challenging area to develop due to its terrain, so site selection of an area large enough to support the facility was focused around Placerville Drive and Ray Lawyer Drive areas, just west of downtown, where there is available space. Site one was located on Placerville Drive, we, sorry, I'll take one step back. We considered three different sites. Site one was located on Placerville Drive at the Paraz Road intersection, and it's a nice site, but it was found to be spatially restrictive to serve the needs identified without construction that included massive amounts of earthwork and retaining walls. Site two, located on the Forney Road near Ray Lawyer Drive, was found to be less restrictive, but also faced similar grading and earthwork challenges as the Placerville Drive site. Site three, located on Ray Lawyer Drive, was considered the site that addressed all the key components in a future public safety facility campus and less costly to develop. The team decided to conceptually explore Site three for discussion purposes since it most closely fit the needs of a joint public safety campus. Three building options were then considered based on a developable site space. Option one looked at a condensed building. Option two looked at a split-level facility. Option three looked at a full two-story concept. Option two is the preferred concept and found to be less costly while addressing all the needs of the public safety team. So the next question then became, great, now what does this cost? What does that look like as far as cost estimates? Those were developed for individual police and fire safety facilities as well as the combined facility and illustrate that there is added savings and value in having a joint facility where commonalities such as fitness areas, conference rooms, workstations, and wellness spaces can be shared by the public safety team. The combined facility is estimated between 43.5 million to 67 million with an initial savings of about 13.5%. But there is opportunity to increase that savings and value over the course of final design, should that be the direction staff receives this evening. I realize here that nobody has 43.5 million readily available, and that's okay. Projects are almost never entirely funded at the start. They are funded one phase at a time with the least expensive components at the start of the project in pursuit of environmental clearance, design, and then land acquisition or right-of-way. This is how all major public projects are funded. So what I'm saying is that we don't need the 43.5 million today, but we can get a lot done with lesser amounts as we look for a path forward in funding. My favorite forms of funding a project are through grants. This is an almost near-free money or very little local match required. This would be the first funding opportunity to pursue, and I'm happy to say that both the city and Fire District have an excellent track record of receiving and delivering on grant-funded projects. Other means of funding include loans, such as the 60 million USDA loan that was utilized to construct the new Eldorado County Sheriff's Facility in 2018. And I hope you've all had a chance to tour it, it's a great facility. Another option to consider is a sales tax measure. I value this community's ability to take responsibility of its own town. In, for example, in 2016, Measure L was passed and addressed the city's failing infrastructure and has been a vital component to providing funding and even local match to very large grant opportunities. Presenting a sales tax measure, though not popular, could be considered an option to deliver a joint public safety facility that is in alignment with the community's core values that support our police and fire, as well as in alignment with the city's strategic plan. We would consider any other funding opportunities as well. The summary of the needs assessment is that a joint public safety facility offers a multitude of operational, functional, and community efficiencies and benefits. Staff's recommendations this evening is to receive and file the needs assessment as presented and provided this evening, and direct staff to pursue funding opportunities and initiate project delivery with environmental clearance, right-of-way, and design for combined public, or, excuse me, police and fire public safety facility at a new site. Specific actions such as funding appropriations can be addressed at future individual and joint meetings. This concludes the presentation, and we're all here happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Rebecca. We don't have any, we don't have 65 million laying around or 43 million. That's too bad. Okay, I will go ahead, do we have our contingency back?
Yes.
All right, well, this is actually a great time to pause then, and we'll go ahead and do the rest of the pinning.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, I appreciate the flexibility. As, we don't, we don't control when the, when the calls come in, and, yeah, we'll be, we'll do this quickly. So this engineer, Ryan Strange, is being promoted to fire captain. The fire captain position within the agency is really, probably one of the most critical positions that we have. The fire captain is in charge of the crews. Whenever they respond to calls in the fire station, you know, he's, he or she is really where the rubber meets the road. They're directly supervising our firefighters. They're giving them assignments and whatnot on fires. And really, you know, their, their safety is entirely in, in the captain's hand to make sure that our crews are operating in a safe function. So it's, it's a critical position. It's a very strenuous testing process, as Ryan will attest to, that they go through to get to where he's at today with this promotion, because it's not a position that we take lightly. It is, like I said, it's probably the most critical position that we have because he has that direct responsibility for the safety of our crews. So Captain Ryan Strange, he grew up in Eldorado County. He graduated from Pondrosa High School in 2001. He's a devoted husband and a proud father of two that are here with us today. Ryan started as a volunteer in Cameron Park Fire Department in 2003 and attended paramedic school in 2004. Ryan worked as a paramedic for AMR in Stockton, California, for two years before he got hired with Eldorado County Fire in 2007. Ryan is looking forward to his role as a fire captain and wants to thank his wife and kids for their continued support. And this evening, he will be pinned by his wife Haley, along with his kids Grant and Taylor. And I will say that Ryan actually officially got promoted about a week ago, and how many fires you been on now, three? So this might not be a good thing, but we're gonna make it work outside. I invite his wife and children up to do their promotional pinning. his wife and children up to, to do their promotional pinning.
You please raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ryan Strange.
Do you solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Consta- Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
The Constitution of the United, the State of California.
And the policies of the Eldorado County Fire Protection District?
And the policies of the Eldorado County Fire Protection District.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or a purpose of evasion?
Or a purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully?
That I will well and faithfully.
Is charged and dues?
Is charged and dues.
Of a fire captain?
Of a fire captain.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
About, which I'm about to enter. So, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have another round of applause for all of our new penings this evening? We'll give everybody a second here, that's filing out. Okay, we'll go ahead then and go back to item 6.1, and I think we were at questions, so we'll go ahead and, and open this up to either board if there's any questions. Comments?
So the next step, the obvious one, talking about grant funding.
There you go.
Hello?
Yep.
Okay. Well, the, the obvious funding source is grant funding, so what are the next steps that we need to do? Do we have enough information to move ahead with it? Because we know that the state right now is having a deficit of 25 billion, they had 100 million overage last year, and how is that gonna affect future funding for this kind of project and grants?
So we've actually identified a couple of potential funding sources. On a facility of this level, you actually end up funding components. For example, we have identified several state and federal grant funding sources that are specific to development and delivery of an emergency operations center. So that is, you know, kind of, you kind of have to go through a foot-and-door method when it comes to grant funding. There are several other local grant funding sources too. There was a couple of them that were actually listed in the needs assessment, there's a blank, a block grant program that's available, and then we've actually informally talked to USDA, because when we found out how the sheriff had funded their facility, we just said, okay, well, what does that even look like? Is that even a viable solution? And, you know, I mean, bless his heart, he was ready to give us money immediately. So, we wanted to, you know, we said, whoa, whoa, we're not there yet, we're not there yet, you know, we need to talk to our, our council and board and figure out what this actually even looks like, if this is even something they want to pursue. And he said, okay, well, let me know and give me a call. But there are a lot of opportunities, you know, you'd be surprised how many grants are available for our first responders.
So that other piece was a loan, I assume?
Yes, that is an option as well. Yeah.
But then that requires funding to pay that off alone, which is different than grant funding.
Correct, and financing, yes.
Just quickly, one of the points that I wanted to make tonight, and I know you haven't had this report for very long, because I haven't had it for very long, I think I got it the day before Thanksgiving. Thank you, thank you. And thank you to Rebecca, she actually was finalizing this while she was at Disneyland, so if there's errors in it, it's because she was, you know, going on a Mickey Mouse ride or something at the same time, I'm not sure what she was doing. But one of the things that I want to encourage you to do, and we can start this process looking at funding, but I would encourage you to look hard at this needs assessment in terms of the facilities that are proposed, because we all know that 67 million dollars is a, is a big number. We were looking at that, and we were very happy, Rebecca was very successful recently in getting us a 15 million dollar grant for Placerville Drive, and we thought, that's great. I would hope that we can get some grant funding, it would be nice to get all of it. I'm, I'm not real optimistic that we will get all of it, we're gonna have to fund it somehow. But I do think that there's some more analysis that we can go through, you as a board and us as staff, looking at this and determining what ways are there to chip away at some of those costs that are in there. And, so I would encourage you, I looked at it from the police side, you guys can look at it from the police side also, and you from the fire side, are the proposals in terms of needs and et cetera, discuss those with your staff, your fire staff, and we will do the same with our police staff, and determine, you know, are there things in there that maybe we can make adjustments to, that, that aren't completely necessary, that still meet those critical needs that we have, but can save us costs as we go forward. I do think that, you know, we really need to think hard about the, that, that number, 67, I'm sorry, I keep throwing that out, 67 million dollars, and determine, you know, is that doable? There's some issues that we will need to deal with, for example, we brought up the issue of a sales tax, not saying that's the direction we go. But if we did go that way, how does that work between, this facility will serve more than just the city limits, for example, in terms of fire service. And, so is there an adjustment that we make for that? Do we look at some other way to put that? So those are all the things we need to look at in terms of the funding needs and how we, how we go about that. And I think it's, I think this is a great starting point, or not a starting point, we're, we're one step into it, we've got a lot of information now, and I think that we should go back and, and review that and, and start that, that funding analysis, absolutely. Look at what options we have, where can we start looking at, at grants? And, and then what are our other options if we do not get the grant? I always laugh, because in the past I had a person call me once and they said, in terms of, I don't even remember what facility it was we were gonna find, it may have been this one, they said, well, why don't you just bond for it? And I said, well, yeah, we can do that, but we still have to pay for that bond. Bond is basically a loan, so there's all those things that, that we need to consider, and I, I really, I, I, I think this is a great study, it's given us terrific information. I think we need to dig into it now and then make recommendations of, of our next step going forward. So I'd encourage you, if you have questions, I mean, I'll make our staff available for that to answer questions, and the consultant, I'm sure that your chief can answer a lot of the questions in terms of the needs assessment, the costs, and et cetera. Some of the cost items might need to come back to our staff and the consultant, if you have questions about, you know, why does this cost so much, or whatever. So, all of those things we can, we can look at and figure out how to get you answers for, so.
Do I have a lot of questions? With regarding to the funding sources you were talking about, would those only apply if we did the joint building? You know, I'm not sure I wanna, don't want to consider two different buildings yet. I mean, obviously, this needs assessment showed us a great place where to put our fire department and where, where to move that, and, and that's great. Not 100% sure that moving the police department out of the heart of Placerville is the direction we want to take, especially when I look at, the costs look like we could build it for half as much with, where we already have the property and, and had planned for that. That's what I was kind of looking at here, for eight and a half million dollars versus, you know, the 27 to 38 million, there's big gaps in those, those prices and numbers.
I got this one, I'm like, I got this one. So, I appreciate it, and I, I value the prior needs assessment that was done, but one thing you may notice too, is that the square footage on the prior needs assessment was about half the amount that's actually needed. I mentioned, you know, it's been a long time coming, this whole report. The blessing in that was that we were actually able to identify operational and future growth opportunities that that report did not cover. And so, although at that time it was felt to be a thorough report, it was also a blessing that we did not pursue that at that time, because we would not have provided an adequate police facility for our police department. With that being said, the prices of construction are costly, and I, you know, we keep saying 67 million, there's a lower number too. So I'm pretty, you know, I, we take very seriously the fact that we are the keepers and the protectors of taxpayer money. This isn't our money that we're playing with here, it's everybody else's money, it's your money and it's all of ours. And so when we look at funding opportunities on how we can fund a facility for that, we did take a hard look at separating out the facilities, and what we found were the redundancy and the commonalities are where we lost money, if we didn't take the opportunity to join them. As far as a separate facility, the other thing to consider in funding grant opportunities is if we have an EOC and fire has an EOC, now we're competing against each other in the same grant too. The biggest advocate for scoring high on a grant application, collaboration. They love it when they see agencies working together, and I will tell you firsthand witnessing the way our police department and our fire district work together is nothing short of a family. So it's really, you know, really nice to see that there's so much support that can be integrated in a shared facility as well as opportunity. Did that answer your question?
Okay, thanks. Obviously, these are two separate departments. How, in the, in the future, say this goes forward?
Yes ma'am.
How in the future do we split our costs versus their costs? I mean, is this gonna be a tremendous amount of accounting, bookkeeping, whatever you want to call it, even building it? I mean, the, the needs are different, and we're building certain amount of it for the fire department and a certain amount for the police, and how is that gonna be split up? And I see what you're saying about the sales tax situation, how would you present that to the public, you know, to, go ahead.
Well, that's okay, these are all great questions, thank you for asking them. So there's a couple of ways that you can split costs, and I'll say on every single large funded project that we have, and sometimes even smaller funded projects, we utilize various funding sources that, that only pay for specific components already. If, the, the, from progress payments to consultants, to progress payments to a contractor, everything gets split in a particular way based on what we consider eligible costs under one versus another. One way to look at this is the spatial needs, how much square footage does fire need compared to the police department? And I have the number written down unfortunately on a note in my office at home, but I believe it was 54% PD and then 46%? Is it? Oh, good.
59.
5941, okay, excuse me, 59% PD and 41% the fire district. So we can either do a direct split that way, but again, I go back to this is a conceptual design.
Right.
So it could change, but, you know, I want, the reason why I recalled this slide is, our consultant color-coded the floor plan based on fire needs in red, police-specific needs in blue, and shared commonalities in green. And that's how we can look at splitting the costs of those facilities. And there's other ways too, you know, kind of depending upon if the city gets specifically a grant, then that can help fund, or if the fire district specifically gets a grant, then that can fund a portion of theirs. But we do split funding and track funding regularly.
Just, just add to that, I think that the initial process getting it set up will take some work, but once we had it set and determined this is how it's gonna work, I think it, it can work fairly easily, not, not a big problem, so.
I went, just wanted, have, I, I know you visited facilities, I saw that, at different, but have, is there any other, did you visit a combined facility that, and you, and you tested it out to see how it worked for them and?
We did, we actually went to the Winters facility.
In Winters?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and their population's right around the same size as ours.
Okay, so that was a good?
Yeah. You know, actually, I really valued, and I think the team did as well, we really valued that experience of being able to do those tours. There were so many things that, you know, when somebody asks you the question of what do you need, sometimes that's a hard question to, to answer, and especially to the folks that, that we as staff and electeds are actually serving in the reverse capacity to our first responders. These are folks that don't ask for anything, and so to ask them what they need or ask them what they want, they go, well, I mean, I guess it'd be nice if I had a new locker, mine doesn't, the door doesn't close. You know, they're just the humblest and most wonderful in spirit, and, but to be able to walk those facilities and see facilities that had adequate dorms for our overnight firefighting staff, that didn't have to walk through a kitchen to go to the extractor and take off.
Right, no, I understand all that. I mean, I, believe me, I understand the needs, I really do. I've understood it for the last 16 years.
Yes ma'am.
So, and it's just gotten progressively worse, you know, the understanding, so, but it, it was just, I mean, these are all the things that, you know, you question when you see combining, because before we only talked about the police department, and now we're talking about combining, which, the way it was presented to us, I think the savings are just tremendous, and it certainly makes sense, since we're both in dire need to do this, but I just, it just seems like it's two different situations, and, and that's why I'm questioning, so how do you figure it out, and is it gonna take a tremendous amount? Are we gonna have to hire more people just to figure out how to split everything, you know, and make it work? So, but, okay, and one more thing, and I'll give it to Dennis. The Winters, did you, and, and if it was in here, I apologize, because I missed it, did you question them on how they derive their funding for their situation?
Yes, and as I recall, some of it was grant funding, and then I think that they had a partial loan, did they have a?
I think they had a benefit assessment.
Yeah, they did a benefit assessment as well, which is something we've been looking at whenever we create benefit assessment districts, looking forward into the future for CFDs and things like that, is to actually include a public safety component, because now you're adding X amount of lots to, you know, subdivision or, that, that now is also, you know, calls for service. So it does make sense to help carry that burden in that regard. And then the other thing too was, we noticed that either, even though we only personally toured Winters, we actually went through and did a lot of research as the team on other joint facilities throughout the country, and doing a joint facility appears to be the direction most agencies are headed now because of the savings and because of the commonalities and shared uses.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Hi. Every, every journey starts with the first step, right? We're in the second step. And I know, when I sat on the fire board for six years, I know that, you know, we talked at, at great length about the, the dilapidation of our, of our fire stations and 25 in particular, and there was just, there was never a place where we could see into the future where it made sense. And I know that it's been a need for our fire district, for our police department, since they occupied, since they started, since they, their first day of occupancy of that building, it was too small for them, and it was one of those things we missed the mark on. If you look at the sheriff, he, I guess you could say he did it right, and the fact that he really, he really created a building for the, for the next 50 years and not for that. And, you know, that was very wise on his part. And, and, and I think in part that's, you know, you know, and everybody thought he was crazy at 60 or 50 million, that ended up being 60 million. And he did it. And he, he got support, and I think that was a great thing for our community. Now, here we are, starting this journey as well, and we don't need to know the answers, we don't need to have all those answers. There's so many projects that we've worked on in the last four years that, I was like, well, how are we gonna fund that? Well, let's just do this step first, and then the next step comes along, first we gotta, you know, and, and I think that's an important thing to remember here, because it does start with one step, and we don't always have to know what the next step's going to be in order to start the project. And these funds, but I did have a question, when you said, when they are all talking about what's important in the grant funding process and the competition, who are they?
It can be, you know, the state, it can be feds, it can be, there are special interest groups that have grants, things like that.
Okay. And then, I think this is a much-needed thing for us to do, for, for our future of our community, for the future of fire, and, you know, fire has been so woefully under, underappreciated, and, and, you know, I know, I know that they are appreciated, but underappreciated, as well as our police department, underappreciated in how they have been in the facilities. And, you know, I know what our police department goes through on a daily basis, and thank you guys for still being here and, and serving our community in such a challenging environment with, with the facilities, but you guys, you know, most of the time, nobody complains. And when they complain, it, they're, they're, it's real. I know the firefighters had, for a period of time, they had water shoots over their beds where the water's dripping out. We don't need to go back and revisit all this stuff again, but it, it is much needed in our community, and I just, I- And I just, I appreciate everybody taking the risk of even talking about a 60 or $43 million project. Let's call it $43 million right now, because it... Yeah. So I appreciate staff and both of these boards taking the risk of actually even saying those words out loud, because it's a heavy lift for our community. I mean, we have a heavy lift just trying to figure out how to pay for our $30 million... Was it $30 million? Forty million sewer system? And here we are talking about this. But we did that, and I believe that we can do this... Well, we... Yeah, that's written in stone. We're going to do that. We're going to finish that. And I believe that we can do this too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a comment on that, and this may help out Patty just a little bit. So my day job is on fire captain with Sacramento Fire Department. I work downtown, and it's... Oftentimes, we don't think about how much we really do work together between specifically like Sacramento PD and Sacramento Fire. And oftentimes, we find ourselves going between facilities just to command incidents and just to, you know, the SAC PD will use our downtown station as an EOC when they have various things, or we'll go to their facility up on Richards for various things. And so we cross-pollinate more than we think. And at the line level, we don't realize it. You know, we're out there on the streets and we're working together with, you know, hand-in-hand with police department, with, you know, Engine 25 and Placerville, you know, day-to-day. And so we don't think about it as much as we really do. And those shared facilities, actually streamlining what we do on a day-to-day basis between PD and Fire, it's actually, it's quite a bit more than we would think, you know, just with the emergency operations, the joint facilities, all the things that go on, especially in downtown Placerville, you know, with those, with all the events that we have. It really just does make sense to maybe just walk across the hall rather than drive across the city to be able to do those things. So it's pretty significant.
Rebecca, on the loan that the sheriff was able to do on, for his facility, could you, and I don't know if you know all the details of it, but could you maybe do a broad brush of what that looked like and how they were able to qualify? I mean, do we fall into that same parameter as they do?
I will tell you that I don't know the details and specifics, so everything will be from about a 30,000-foot elevation.
Understood.
Okay. We actually spoke to the individual that, with the USDA, that actually supported and helped them through the process for their loan. And when we explained what we did and we, you know, noted what he had done for the sheriff's department, and just, he said, "No, this is a great idea." He goes, you know, "This is what..." People always think that USDA only needs to go to agriculture and stuff, but it's more than that. We're talking about, you know, preservation of wildlands, basically, too, when you're talking about fire prevention. And then, you know, just, he had a whole slew of reasons why this qualifies. He goes, "These are the same reasons why the sheriff's facility qualified as a law enforcement agency, and there's actually more reasons why you guys would qualify having a fire protection district as well." So I felt pretty confident, in so much as, you know, I mentioned he was very tenacious. And it was such a, it was, you know, nice, because we went to this conversation, you know, just so we could even have a bullet on our report, right? Like, is this even a viable option? And when we talked to him, by the time we got off that phone call, he's like, "Okay, here's what you need to get me in order to start the application." I'm like, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, pump the brakes, buddy. We need, we gotta talk to some people." So I didn't get too far down the road with him on that, for an obvious reason. We wanted to come in here and check in with our council and board and receive direction appropriately. But it sounded pretty promising.
No, that's great. And do you know, is that like an omnibus type of funding bill that goes through yearly? Is this like a company that's funded on a yearly grant cycle, or is it ongoing?
It seemed, I don't know if it was annual, but it might have been biannual.
Okay. Okay. And then, and this might be a question for Dave. Like, Ibank, you know, if we were to be able to secure some funding, is Ibank a potential other place for us to go to, you know, for a loan? You know, assuming we have a funding source in place to, you know, make something like this happen?
Good evening. Dave Orne, Assistant City Manager, Finance Director. So if this grew legs and ran, we would work with our financial advisor and look at every financing opportunity, including Ibank, USDA, to look at the best deal possible. In other words, the lowest interest rate, the less strings, so on and so forth, and the least amount of cost of issuance. In other words, there's a cost to actually acquiring debt, as you know. So we would reduce, try to figure out the cheapest way of doing this possible.
Infrastructure Bank with the state of California. Thank you, Dave. So I think, any other comments at this time? Yes, Paul?
All right, super, thanks. So a couple of questions. One of the funding ones that came to my mind are the community foundations. I don't know if that's on the list or not, but El Dorado Community Foundation has helped us out with some funding. I think these are facilities that are desperately needed, based on what I've seen and what I've read. I have a, and this is more my technology background question, is the emergency operations center, it was that discussed as being a raised-floor environment? So, and I have a vision of what I've seen with computer screens, monitors, and a lot of cabling and so forth going through. Are those raised-floor? Are we talking about a raised-floor situation?
We didn't get to that level of detail, but that's certainly something that we can discuss when we get in towards final design. This was very, very broad-brush stroke, and the entire intention of that was just for us to have somewhat of a thoughtful conversation as a collective brainstorming and dreaming session, if you will, on what could be for a facility. But in my mind, next steps would be, if we were to receive direction based on the recommendation this evening, both city staff and fire district staff would then come back to individual board and council and request for permission to solicit services for environmental clearance and things like that, and also to seek funding for... It's all for naught if we don't know where we're going to build it. So the first step in this particular project is getting the location ironed out. And we have three options, but, you know, we can certainly look at others. But, you know, we would, in theory, start with our preferred option and go from there. But this is very, very, very preliminary, very conceptual. So I apologize, we didn't get to the level of discussing a raised floor and an EOC.
And for me, it's cable race tracks, I mean, just putting everything in a proper place so that it can function.
We did discuss an isolated IT room with its own temperature control.
Okay, perfect, good, that helps, yeah. And then the other one, and this kind of came up in our, not kind of, it came up in our board meeting earlier today, is how does this align with our strategic plan? And we are in the process of going forward and doing our strategic plan in January. And I'm curious as to, and I may have missed it, I just didn't see it in the documentation errors, how does this align with the city of Placerville's strategic plan and how things are going to go forward? And I apologize if I missed it.
No, you're doing great, and I'm actually really grateful for this question, because it allows me to highlight this. So, you know, the city did adopt a strategic plan in July of this year, and under the specific strategy of maintain and improve infrastructure and facilities to provide to the community a public safety building. It's actually our first strategy. So, first goal. So it, you know, was right in alignment, you know, the council took a lot of time and thoughtful energy into developing that strategic goal based on our core community values, and our core community values, including supporting our police and fire and medics. And that is what rose that one right to the top.
Okay. So I would, a recommendation that I would ask to look at is perhaps a fourth option that might come out of the El Dorado County Fire Strategic Planning Operation. And I would ask the staff to take a look at that based on the discussions from our board meeting earlier today, and make sure that we're, you know, taking that on full, you know, head-on.
Excellent. Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Can I ask a, what did... You lost me a little bit at the very end there, when you were, what exactly were you referring to that you might be working on that would need to take in? From this side of the table, what is it that you were referring to? It's kind of obscure.
All right, thanks. So we had discussion about some facilities and utilization of facilities and so forth. And I would just like to make sure that, and I will even say, Director Kaiserman and I talked across the street, is there some of the ways, with some of the facilities, we could use them to generate revenue? And I come from private sector, so Station 15, is that up in Strawberry? Am I going to get that right? Station 15? Or 16? So one person said, "Why don't we turn that into a bed and breakfast?" I mean, as something that generates revenue. And now I know some of the facilities we received through a grant trust or a trust from donations. And maybe there's some limits there, but I would ask for some flexibility in that option to look at those, how facilities could be utilized. And that comes in my background. I did some international work, and we had distributed places. And don't get me wrong, I think consolidated is good, but I think there's also opportunity to use some decentralized as well with that. Did that help?
Yes, thank you.
So if I may, you know, the team did brainstorm like what could be come from the old police station and fire station. And there's a lot of opportunities, you know. This building is highly utilized as not only our council chambers, but as a makeshift community center. And it would be lovely to have a legitimate community center for Placerville. That was one, this, and this is, we were talking, like, just, we threw a bunch of ideas in the middle of the table as a brainstorming session one day. And the former, or the police department building could serve as a great community facility. The fire station 25, you know, we lovingly and jokingly referred to it as, "Let's turn it into a steakhouse," you know? Everybody wants to eat steak in an old firehouse, you know? And it's such a great building, and has so much character and so much history with it. We truly cherish it and love it. So, you know, there's, you know, although those facilities don't serve what their currently intended use, that doesn't mean that we throw them away. We're not a wasteful bunch up here at all. And so we did think a little bit of that. And I really appreciate you bringing that up, because it didn't make it in the report, and it was something in my mind that I was like, "Oh, you know, if I ever get a chance to bring that up, I should bring that up." So I really appreciate your comments.
Yeah, thank you, Rebecca. I would just ask that that fourth one looks at what comes out of our strategic planning that's coming in, and that that is definitely took into consideration. Thank you.
All right. I think I'll pause with any other questions from the council and board, but we'll go ahead and open it up for any public comments.
Excuse me if I missed this, just by not hearing clearly, but I got the idea that when you combine them into one facility, there's a cost savings in construction. The question is, in your first responder fields, is there other kinds of operational efficiencies that you gather, why would be to your advantage?
Thank you. We'll try to answer those questions at the end if there's any other public comments. Going once, going twice? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comments, bring it back. I don't know if anyone, Rebecca, if you want to, or if anyone wanted to... Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Vassmer. With regards to the operational efficiencies, we spoke at length about that, and there's a multitude of different opportunities there, you know, with the shared spaces that we've talked about. But also, this facility, this concept would bring our administration, our fire administration, which is currently up in Camino down into the city of Placerville. And we currently see, you know, almost on a daily basis, where somebody's gone to City Hall that's working on a project, and it involves the fire department, so they need to get in their car and drive up to Camino and deal with our fire prevention bureau, and then, okay, well, we need this, and they've got to go back to the city. So there's a lot of back and forth, a lot of extra work for the citizens, whereas having, you know, the administration, you know, right in Placerville with our fire prevention bureau and those type of things there. And then some of the other operational, you know, things with, you know, as Director Schwab mentioned, with, you know, having an EOC, having those shared spaces where we can work together, which we do on a very routine basis. The other thing that I'd really like to just personally highlight is, I know this is a joint meeting, we have our fire board here, we have the city council here, you know, my uniform says El Dorado County Fire on it, but we are the city of Placerville Fire Department. And I spent the bulk of my career at Station 25, serving the citizens of Placerville. And despite, you know, the efficiencies that we gained through our consolidation, we take great pride in being the city's fire department and serving the citizens of Placerville. And there are, you know, desperate needs. We do know that, just from being through Station 25, the limitations there. But when we have things like the Caldoor Fire, I would have loved to have up-staffed and brought another fire engine and crew into Placerville to protect the citizens and have that augmented resource there. This, the city of Placerville is one location where I physically cannot bring another engine company in place. We up-staffed equipment, we put it in Camino and other stations, because there is, there's nowhere to put them. So we can capture a lot of efficiency and enhance service levels by bringing our operation in and sharing that space with the city PD.
I know there was a, I think it was probably whenever we had the last presentation, there was, I don't know if it was a question or someone brought it up, but in terms of dispatch, is there a way to share dispatch? Or is it just different types of calls for service that dispatch would be, have to be a different thing?
I can do it, they can do it, whatever you want, I don't care.
I think Rebecca can probably speak to some of the police dispatch. It is very different, and for us, you know, our ambulances, which we operate, are part of the county system, so they're dispatched through our allied agency of CalFire, Community ACC. And with, you know, the wildland threat that we all face in this county, having all of our fire resources in a joint facility that is dispatched under one roof, there's definitely operational advantages there, and that's something that, you know, could you have a dispatch center in there? Absolutely. Operationally, I think our best bet is making sure that we're connected with the rest of the county.
And Rebecca, what the, on the, our $43 million, what's the shelf life, you think, realistically of that number? I mean, we've been through plenty of these, where we're now seven years down the line, you know, from where we first saw a number, and it's grown, you know, 50% or whatever it might be. I mean, one year, two years? I mean, what are we looking at realistically in terms of this number still being a realistic one?
Two to four.
Two to four?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we did add escalation in some of the numbers, and we, I'm a big fan of rounding up, so I actually, when I will do an initial engineer's estimate, and this is the old design part of me was, you never want to be low bid, because I'm not running an excavator. So when you do an engineer's estimate, you definitely hefty up your numbers, and that was something that we asked the consultant to do when they did those numbers. So I feel fairly comfortable that they're already kind of, let's just say, subtly padded.
Okay, thank you. Because I mean, I assume, I mean, we're at least a year from anything even, even, whatever that next step may be.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, you know, kind of to Councilmember Thomas's point, you know, on how big these projects are and how we don't need the money right away, and how we do get them, you know, delivered in a step-by-step process, you know, it, I always say, you know, when you have to, we have to eat the elephant one bite at a time, and this is us taking a bite out of that elephant. So, but, you know, we just continue on a steady course. We, you know, with, if we were to get approval in the direction recommended this evening, that would be a significant step for us to pursue, actually looking at the, how much it really would cost for land acquisition, how much it really would cost for building and doing the improvements.
Which brings me to the land.
Yes ma'am.
Is it county land, or is it privately owned land, or...
All three parcels were privately owned.
Okay, so do you have a...
A small portion, yeah. A small portion of the Ray Lawyer one we do own.
So, again, I apologize if you already stated it in this report, but have you looked into the purchase of it? I mean, and is it...
We had a very, like, very basic conversation with the realtor. This was, oh my gosh, probably 12 months ago. Like I mentioned before, we really didn't want to get the cart too far in front of the horse without speaking to council and board.
And is this, this purchase, would it be, it has to be appraised value? And we can't go over it because it's a government?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen it done a couple of different ways. On a recent public project, actually, we had, I believe, a total of 12 property owners donate portions of their property to support a city project getting delivered. So, and, you know, kind of to, to, one of the board member comments was the El Dorado Community Foundation. That was actually something we did look at for potential funding. I know for me personally, if there was ever an opportunity, like, fund a locker, you know, I know me and my family would pull together the funds and buy a locker for the facility. If there was ever an opportunity to, you know, buy a set of weights or what have you, there's a lot of opportunities to fund some of the things within this facility. And there's a lot of generous and loving hearts in this community that's...
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. I mean, it's all over town, you can see what's been done, but my thought is the land, and I don't think anybody's going to graciously give us that.
No, but they would be willing to take a discount on it, yes. I believe the words that were used were a haircut.
Okay. I just, I was, the only reason I ask is I thought, okay, if we get this started, are we going to have a battle over land, which has happened in the past?
And that's the beauty about having three different options, and really, those are only three that we looked at, there could be more, is this is in no way, shape, or form a defined commitment to one or another. We will always look to see what is best in the interest of our public facilities and funding them, and I mentioned one of the values that we focused on in this was fiscal prudence. That's definitely going to come into play when we do land acquisition.
There's a long history of properties being donated, or loaned, or given with restrictions to fire.
Yes.
And so I wouldn't necessarily rule that out, I think it, it's, there's, right, yeah, there's a lot of our, there's a lot of the county fires' properties that are deeded over for the purpose of fire, and so it's, that's a real thing.
Rebecca, when this conceptual design was put together, was it put together for a 30-year timeframe, or what's the useful life and for growth? Or is it, or are we going to be, this is going to last us with the growth rate in the county, which is not super fast, but the growth rate, is it going to last us the next 30, 40 years?
It's estimated at a 50-year facility, yeah. So, yeah, it's, you know, it's amazing, one thing that kind of, you know, struck me when we started doing the needs assessment was, you know, when you talk about a 50-year facility, you're talking about around-the-clock use, and that was, you know, I mean, we often think, oh, yeah, it's had a service life of 50 years. Well, no, no, 24 hours a day for 50 years. So that's like three times the normal length of the facility for 50 years, so, you know, it was just, it was.
So if it's a 50-year facility, are we saying that we could cut back certain sizes of it now, where we could then add on later on? Would that get the price down? I mean, is that?
Yes, yeah, actually, that was something that we did cover briefly in the report, was, again, this was all conceptual, but we did think of, you know, does the site have the ability for future expansion? Could we plan for vertical stability within the new facility to go up? You know, that's one thing that we're significantly limited at both facilities for, is we don't have the structural stability in the building itself to go up. If we had that, that would solve a lot of things and even make it a viable option, but as it is right now, we don't have that. But we did look at that for this facility, though.
I was going to, I know Joe's not here with us, but commanders, did you all have anything you wanted to add to the discussion? That's good. Just wanted to make sure that gave PD a chance to share anything. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, so we have, we do have some options in front of us, staff's provided, you know, receiving file and, you know, allow staff to proceed with the next step to determine funding feasibility, I think is what staff is recommending here.
I do have one question.
Yes.
If we, if we vote to move forward, how is, how is, how much of that is predicated on any individual piece of property? Because it seems like the, you know, acquisition and property acquisition is probably somewhere needs to be in the future.
Yes, ma'am, or sir.
Number one. And so how much is it predicated on this, if we were asking to move forward, how much is it predicated on this piece of property? Is that your main focus going forward?
I mean, it would be the first place we would start, and, you know, kind of depending upon the, everything we do, you know, we've gone through, and this is more, I know I'm preaching the.
I guess, I guess, let me rephrase the question.
Yes, sir.
Is this, so if we were, if we were to, and it sounds like, you know, we'd like to, could this be applied to quite a few different properties, the next step, as opposed to this piece of property?
Yes, we're not, we are not married to any one piece of property right now.
So most of the efforts that are going to be going forward are, yeah.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
Yes, we have available options.
These guys come and say, ah, we don't want to sell to you guys.
Which could very well happen, right, exactly.
And we don't want to break up that piece of property, or whatever. So the, everything that we say would not be predicated on that.
So, yeah, I mean, our next step would be, you know, we would come back likely in January, you know, we'd see how, we'll do a check-in on how the conversation has gone with that particular property, and if it has not gone well, then, you know, we just, we report that back to council, and I believe in January is the time when we would probably appropriate some funding, at least for the city's portion, some monies that we have set aside towards this project, and then go from there.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Joe.
I've got a follow-up on that.
Sure.
If the, if the joint boards were to go with the first option there, and it's, what would be the timeline to be doing the funding? Would it be another year, another 18 months? How long would it be to be coming back with that type of information?
As soon as I can find a grant to submit on, I will.
So, so help, so I'm, this is not, it's a little bit new to me, grant funding, so is the anticipation for this, I mean, knowing we've got the inflation, there's deficits within the government, although the feds can print money whenever they want, but is there an expectation for timing?
I would say, I, I'm cautious about giving you timeframe on that because I don't have any control of when the grants are actually released, or when the applications are due, or when they issue the awards. I would say within a year, we would be able to have a decent framework of funding the project.
And I'm not going to hold you to that, I'm just.
That's good, thank you.
Yeah, I wouldn't plan of it, but just to try to understand.
Yeah.
Because I know we were supposed to meet a couple of times earlier this year, and for various reasons.
Yeah, and I apologize for that, you know, it's workload these days is like drinking from a fire hose, so I really appreciate the board and councils.
Pun intended.
Yeah, exactly. So I really appreciate the board and councils' patience with staff and getting this wrapped up, and really appreciate our fire chief and our police chief and our commanders. You just, you guys have the utmost, top-notch, professional staff in the chiefs and the commanders, and they've been a blessing this whole time. I don't know what I would do without Tim in this, so he is just amazing.
Thanks. I've got a question on procedure, if, are we going to read these? Can we amend them? Can we suggest an amendment?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, and their receiving files, the way I was looking at this was, we would just sort of nod and give sort of general direction, that it wouldn't be a formal vote. I mean, we certainly could do a formal vote, but generally on a receiving file, we would just be giving sort of a verbal direction to staff.
And I think that on a lot of this, just general direction is what we need tonight. There's nothing specific that we have to say, you know, go apply for this grant or go do this. We don't, we're not at that point yet. I think mostly what we're looking for is, you know, yes, continue down this path, get more detail at this point, and move forward with next steps, and I think that it would be advisable for us to bring this back to you, not a year from now, but periodically we'll re-update reports to you and help you, help us along the way, so.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, you know, maybe, you know, during budget, you know, we just do an update, it could be, we're still in the exact same spot, you know, we're still looking for a grant that makes sense, but just as a, as a marker, if you will, like in June, you know, before, before we adopt budget, as a next marker, since we're all sort of, I think we're all in the same cycle, right, for budgets? So we could do that, but to your question, I think it would just be, we're just going to be providing direction.
Okay, thank you. And if I, I would, I'd just like to formally say, I would, if we're recommending, I'm along with number one, bullet, the first bullet, personally, and for those that I represent, and I would add to it, considerate, taking into consideration Eldorado County Fire Strategic Planning cycle we're getting ready to go through, so that they line up.
Okay, so city council, or do we have sort of a agreement to at least proceed along this path for exploration of?
If I were making a motion, that's what my motion would be.
All right, so I think you're getting head nods over here, head nods over there to proceed?
Yeah, I think a formal motion would be good, not, I mean, it's general direction, but a formal motion, I think, would be good along those lines to keep us.
Okay, I make a formal motion.
So he was speaking, and we're going to, each board is going to make their own individual motions, but there's a receiving file, and there's direct staff to pursue funding opportunities, both of those are one where.
There's two of those. I don't know if he was looking at the staff report or that report.
Oh, I was looking at this staff report.
Yeah, so there's. Okay, so to be, to be specific, it says, options for the board to consider. The first bullet point says, receive and file the report and direct staff to proceed with the next step, I guess step is missing, to determine funding feasibility, while taking into consideration Eldorado County Fire Strategic Planning. I'm adding that as an amendment, if we're going to do a formal motion.
That's on our side.
On our side, correct, on our side. And part of that is, our strategic plan is not current. We, this past year, have been talking about having that strategic plan in place, and that it would set the direction for the district for years to come, and it seems this would be a big piece of that.
I would say if you want to go ahead and take that action on your side, and then the council can.
I am.
Hold up, Mr. Yelker.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Patty, I think you were going to take a stab at a motion?
Dennis is telling me something.
I'm suggesting.
He's suggesting.
Well, this is good, this kind of better spells out what we're.
So he's suggesting that we, that I make a motion to receive and file the needs assessment report as presented, and direct staff to pursue funding opportunities and initiate project delivery with environmental clearance right away and design for a combined police and fire public safety facility at a new site.
All right, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a first.
I just have a question. So, well, because they kind of put a condition on their motion, how would that affect the future moving forward?
To me, if I may, for us on the side, is making sure that our strategic plan includes the implications that goes forward in this, I think that the onus is more on us to make sure that within our strategic plan, which is going to be starting in January, that we are including this in our strategic plan. So I think that more of the onus is on us to make sure that we're.
So you don't see it as a holdup or?
No. No, it's.
Strategic plans are moving.
Our strategic plan includes moving forward.
Yeah.
Right, and that.
And that based on what our strategic planning finds, is it, is it aligned with it? I mean, because we don't know what we don't know, right? So we might find something out, I highly doubt it, but we might find out, in the world I came from, you don't know what you don't know, and until you dive into it, then you'll find out more, and then you'll be in a better position to address it.
Yeah, from my perspective, and my idea is that for us, I want to keep the ball rolling, I want to keep our staff engaged. I believe that you guys are going to be there with us, and so that's kind of what my thinking was in terms of that. You guys got your thing, we got ours.
We're on the same page.
Yeah, exactly. So we got it.
I think we've seen, our problem is, we've seen projects that have taken 16 years, and we want to see this roll on quickly, or quicker than that, if we can.
So any other questions on the motion? See none? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we all have our marching orders. Let's go find some money.
All right, bake sales it is.
Okay, so with that, we are done, basically. It is, what is it, 6:25? I will go ahead and adjourn this joint meeting, and Placerville City Council will meet again on December 13th, and Fire District's next meeting?
January.
January. Okay, all right, well, thank you, everybody, and have a good evening.